All right. It is seven P M on Tuesday, September fifth, twenty twenty-three. Call to order the Wayne Township, Warren County, Ohio Board of Trustees meeting. So, um, please sign in if you haven't. Anybody who's our guest tonight? I have a roll call, please.
Hold on, Mr. Patrick.
Here.
Ms. Golden.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Our president, the county.
All right. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting, August fifteenth?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Well, if they were to pass that.
Aye.
We do have two changes to the posted agenda, and that is, um, about a purchase of a dump truck for the road department and the use of, um, use of ARCA funds to do that. So we'll get to that when we get to our resolutions. Any other changes that you guys know?
I do not have any.
Okay. Any citizens' comments tonight?
There are.
It does not look like we have any citizens to comment, so. Um, Mr. Scott Carey, our road department report.
Good evening, board.
Just going through the motions.
That's all right. That's all right. Whatever keeps you on track. Okay. Uh, let's see.
Oops.
Wow. Sorry. That's okay. Couple, uh, let's see, a couple of updates. Uh, in regards to item nine on my report, I got the five fifty back, uh, today. Uh, thankfully, it did not need, um, the particulate exhaust filter, but it did need a whole menagerie of sensors and a P C M power control module.
Okay.
Uh, actually, two of those, uh, to the tune of thirty-three hundred nineteen dollars. But, uh, that is, I had retrieved it back. It had recall done on it as well while it was there, as well as the two fifty, my truck that I drive. It was there the day before, and those recalls have been completed.
Is the five fifty, is that a dump truck or what it's?
Yeah, that's, that's a plow truck.
Oh, plow truck, okay.
Yeah. That's the, the six, two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Um, so now I've just got another recall for the current sixty-five hundred that we own, uh, for, uh, uh, see, uh, master cylinder control or master cylinders sensor module. So I've been trying to get ahold of the lead. It's got to go way down around Montgomery Road to get that done. Could, Polley's, the truck's too big for them to work on it, so that's in progress. Um, let's see, everything else will go bump, bump up to the number four. I don't know, do you want to discuss the truck now within my report? Do you want to wait till I'm in business?
I like to wait.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what we'll do. Other than that, I will stay on path on the rest of my report. And that's all I have unless you have any questions on every other thing but number four. Or I have anything that you need to pass along to.
No, what do we have budgeted for the, um, the bushwhacking tractor, number seven?
Okay, so that would be.
That's for next year's budget.
That's for next year's budget. I do have, I do have some numbers for that, which will be at next year.
That would be in the budget for, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any, uh, any follow-up or plan for sales road? That's gonna be my next question to take with me.
I mean, as far as any warranty, there is none.
Well, there may have been up until September first.
No, we're a year out.
Okay.
It's gone through a winter.
Uh, I mean, so, so going through a winter, wouldn't that be the deciding factor as to whether or not a, a road is, or the work should be warranted? I mean, I guess that would be the.
Not with plow, not with snow plowing.
Got you.
Not with snow plowing. I mean, we put the fifty-sevens in there mainly built to strengthen the, and the eights were there to try to smooth it out a little bit. Um, and they filled in a lot of the gaps.
Well, I, I mean, they.
I mean, I know it doesn't look like guard road as far as that goes.
The, the grand experiment did not work. Like, it's bad. Like, I, you know, it's embarrassing. I, but, and if you're happy with it, then you're happy with it.
Well, yes, I respectfully disagree, but I mean, as far as the strength and maintaining the integrity of the road, I, I mean, I will, I, I will agree with you as far as, you know, that the eights didn't, didn't stay any longer than what they did do. I am somewhat disappointed there, but I am extremely happy with the strength and of the road. And because we were having, I was having a lot of problems with some soft spots in sales as well as Ellis Lincoln. And using the, the larger stone and then capping it with the smaller stone, which, again, it, it filled in the gaps. It doesn't, it's not a surface of eights like it was when it was first done. But it, the strength and the integrity of the road is still there.
If you're happy with it, then that tells me what I need now.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to the fire department report, Chief Shear.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
Uh, really, no. I did a whole lot on there.
There is, yeah.
Low grant, because they're working on it. The state got some budgeting passed and did go from four hundred and some dollars or whatever up to four thousand. So that was a good increase.
Yeah.
Uh, the engine's back in service. Cummins come out, replaced the turbo actuator, which was, uh, very little of the cost of what they told me it might be, because they put a hole in my credit card for seventy-five hundred dollars, and he should have the bill to me tomorrow, so. Uh, that engine also got front tires on it today. Bringing air compressor, because the only thing that really went good for us in the last two weeks.
Okay.
Uh, cutters on the rescues out of service, waiting on the center pin for that. Probably got binded up in a bind sometime where he's cutting something heavy, so that pin was about this year. Uh, the new engine inspections, we got our flight tickets for the twentieth through the twenty-second. Uh, Pat and myself and Scott's going up there. And to show Scott, because we want, most people that was wanting to go wanted to look at woo-woo's, and it's not about looking at woo-woo's, it's about looking at, basically, we got already a thousand dollars worth of truck. And it'll take, climb underneath it and three days' worth of inspections. And then the new members, uh, Tim's presentation. Only thing other than that was, uh, our squad was in there right behind all his trucks at Ford for recall on Friday, so.
Chief.
It was Wayne Township Day at Ford, week.
We, Wayne Township Week at Ford, yeah.
Do, uh, you know, with, with Deputy Chief Silas's exit, do, do we do any sort of exit interviewing? Um, with, with, well, anyone, um, you know, whether it's a, by the commanding officer or by you, or do we?
I talked to Tim about two months ago because his, uh, his performance had dropped off a lot since he joined a lot of Task Force One and then he started teaching at the career center. And then he said he just don't have time anymore with, uh, his daughter going off to college last week, and, uh, he realized he's missed a lot of time at home and said he's ready to back down, so.
So what are you thinking about, um, are you thinking about some sort of replacement then for him?
I have looked at several people. The problem is I need a person that also is a fire instructor and a V M S instructor, which in our current officers, we do not have that, so. And I know, uh, Cox keeps our training site certification, and he wants to get out and under that. We just re, got it renewed just past, we just got the certificate passed Monday. So he wants to find somebody that can take that over too, because he don't want to do that, get that V M S instructor, so.
So what's the game plan? Do we have one?
Talking to the one person that's got it, that shows a little bit of interest, so.
All right, is there a timeline on that at all or?
Next month or two. I mean, I'm, right now I have no time between now and into October. I mean, I, through the first week of November, I'm book solid. I mean, I have nothing, no extra time right now.
All right, you guys have any other questions?
I have none.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Stacy Loewy, our zoning report.
Good evening. Um, on the report for conditional use and site plan with variance, and I sort of explained that a little more, um, on L one road, that is just for, um, detached secondary accessory dwelling, and it's going to be in a existing barn, so that leads to the need for some variances because the barn's over there and it's a little bit larger, and we will allow by formula for a secondary dwelling, so that leads to the variance. And also because it's already placed eighty or so feet from the right away, it can't meet the hundred-foot setback, so, but otherwise, um, that's what that is. And other than that, it's going to move up the magazine the last couple of weeks, and we're on track to have that out this week, um, out to the printer.
Sounds good.
So.
Yeah, keep, um, since we had those problems with the mailing last time, keep me updated on when that maybe gets dropped off or the timeline, so I can get, let Debbie know.
Right.
It's good to see, yes.
Yeah, because she said she'd make sure she, that at least our route got, got it taken care of.
Well, it just, yeah, I mean, as far as ours, I mean, that's got to go to eleven.
Right, and Debbie was off that week, last week is what happened, or last time it came out.
Correct, and it came out the string.
Yes, and so they front-loaded and, I don't know, I did a bunch of research with Stacy and the, it seems like there was enough magazines.
The number gap, maybe that's what happened.
But I don't know how it, yeah, how, we didn't get any.
Yeah.
When they were supposed to be in everybody's mind. I don't understand how it all works.
I can tell you how that goes. I've been on the phone with the company that does it for the postal service. They don't do, do permits anymore. They said anybody's got permits is old-fashioned. Now they do everything like it's called My Door or something like that, Every Door or something like that.
It's a.
You go to their website, you upload your artwork to them, and you put the circles on their, all electronics. They don't want to give you the route numbers, none of that.
No, there is route numbers on it, yeah.
Yeah, ours has route numbers.
Yeah, because she's probably got hers from a long time ago. Because we tried to, I tried to renew our permit, they won't renew it. Because we used to be permit forty-two, I think it was, in the fire department. Now you gotta do everything online, and they want you to sign.
Yeah, and it was something I mean, I went to, and you could see how many addresses are supposed to be on certain route numbers, and you could actually see the routes and everything.
It shows you where.
Yeah.
It shows you where, there's streets to go there, but for some reason it misses the.
I know. It just makes a lot of sense.
As soon as you log in, if you're done, Rebecca, our electronic lady, calls you up on the phone and also sends you an email to finish your review. But it, the printing and everything on some of ours, it was on like, over five hundred dollars, printing building and everything, on a five-by-eleven.
Yeah.
But you just have the artwork and upload to them, and so the postal service is getting more into printing too.
Yeah. All right. Any more questions for Ms. Loewy?
Was, was there a variance hearing for the balls, doing ball? How, how did that turn out?
It was approved.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Stacy. All right, on to Gus Edwards, our administrative report.
Uh, good evening, board. Uh, been a pretty busy three weeks. Um, first time at OP W C. I'm still gathering documents and everything to submit our final application for, uh, the Coen Avenue project, and it's got to be uploaded to Workwise, which is a new portal for OP W C by this Friday. And I think I'm still lacking two documents for the county engineer's office, so, uh, I'll be scrambling this week to try to get that in, but hopefully I won't have any problems. Um, I'm gonna scroll down here and read off here, so I could do some of this stuff. Uh, hi, Department of Transportation. This here shows that I've uploaded, uh, State Route seventy-three Bridge Project. Um, down towards the bottom here, it is a yes on the award. They ordered on August eighteenth, uh, for four million ninety-six, or whatever, ninety-nine thousand. Uh, total price with engineering and everything is close to five million on these two businesses. Um, went to Double C Construction Company, and, yeah, the sale date was August tenth, war date August eighteen. Uh, completion date still set for ten fifteen twenty-four, and construction started in the second fiscal quarter of, uh, this year, which will be November. And then that page here that I have in the packet tells you all the different stuffs that are gonna be doing, the deck overlay on the Little Miami River Bridge, the bearing replacement, the buttlet repair, pier repair, and bridge railing upgrade. Then over the road, the structure is a complete replacement. So, that breaks down the O dock seventy-three project. Uh, next thing on the agenda is the county engineers' chip seal program that we had. I highlighted in yellow on this page. This is the original estimate for the county engineer's office. I guess one thing I just wanted to call your attention to is that the engineering estimate was at a dollar seventy-five, um, right here, per square yard, for a total of a hundred and fifty-three and a total project cost of a hundred and fifty-eight. So that's, just keep in mind, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand is where we're at when we went into bidding this out. Uh, upon bidding it out, the low bid went to Allied Construction, and their price per square yard was two dollars and eleven cents per square yard. Um, for a total price of a hundred and eighty-five, so we were about forty, forty-two thousand over, uh, plus striping everything, a hundred and ninety-two thousand, so we were, again, about forty-five thousand over engineered estimate. Uh, upon seeing that, then we went back and found that the new, new guy working for the engineer's office had miscalculated and then double, double calculated, uh, square yardage on Guard Road, so once we knocked that off, we were back, instead of eighty-seven thousand square yards, we're back around to sixty-seven thousand square yards. And, uh, that total amount then came up to a hundred and forty-one and a hundred and forty-five. So long and short of it is, is that we took off, uh, forty-seven thousand dollars off of, uh, by reducing those quantities off of, uh, what the bid price was, and so we're back down to that a hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-six cents for what we were built for. And that should have been the payment that's got, which actually became right in line with our budget.
Good catch, gentlemen.
Yeah.
That's a good catch.
Yeah, when I first got, when I first got the, the tabulation, I was like, the, the square yardage was way off. I was like, what's going on here? So started digging into it and found out what it was. Then it came down to the sixty-seven thousand square yard number, which was in line with what I had calculated.
So when they did the bid, the bid had the higher number on there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't catch it with the bid part, we couldn't catch it till the end, right?
No.
No.
All right. We, when they went to Villas, basically.
Oh, no.
Because they did.
We caught it before. We caught it before.
We had to get a tool from them that they weren't gonna change their price when we reduced the type.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, no, it had nothing to do with the billing, it was with the bidding.
All right.
Uh, because, you know, when they originally bid it, they bid it for a lot more square yards.
Right, right.
And then we reduced that by, uh, you know, twenty thousand square yards and twenty-one thousand or whatever it was, that's a fairly substantial amount.
Right.
So, but they were good with it, so.
Okay. But we'll try not to do that trick again next year.
Well, that was.
I know that was Warren County.
That was the county, yeah. But I got, they, they've got a guy now, and I know him, and I'm training.
Okay. All right.
Okay, next item, the, uh, board of elections, uh, have your packet this certification for the state of Ohio, uh, on the language for the ballot, so there it is, so we'll at least know that's exactly how that's going to be. And then I think also I had your packet, uh, a copy of our Q and A for our magazine, um, which I, you know, changed a few things around, um, actually quite a few things, but I think it reads pretty good. So we brought it by quite a few people and run up to some people that didn't understand millage and so forth, and this, this right here seemed to give them a better understanding of what it's gonna cost them. So this one here is, this formula here is factored on this tax bill right here. And then, you know, the others are just on two hundred, four hundred, six thousand, six hundred thousand valuation of a whole, so. And I don't think they've also had any questions, uh, so I think that's it for it. Next, on the, uh, budget commission, uh, took the budget commission hearing on August twenty-third, and comments were made that the Warren County's property reevaluation will take place in twenty-twenty-four, uh, and then that will reflect on the twenty-twenty-five tax dividend, so you won't actually see that change until, uh, you pay your taxes in twenty-twenty-five. All surrounding counties of Warren County are now currently doing the reevaluation, uh, this year, and they are seeing somewhere in between about thirty to thirty-seven percent increase in residential values. And so Mr. Nolan is, uh, hoping that Warren County will come in a little closer to thirty percent. Uh, his deputy thinks it'll be more like thirty-five, but, uh, they're gonna try to keep it as minimal as possible, but still be as active as possible. Uh, and it will typically, just like last time, it'll vary from area to area also. So some, some may be forty percent, and some may be twenty-five to thirty percent. Like last time, we varied anywhere from, I think, thirteen to eighteen percent, I think, increase, or whatever. Um, so with that being said, uh, there's also going to be some upcoming discussion on Warren County's alternative formula for local government distribution. Um, there's a bill to pass that requires the counties now to add that meeting between all, in Warren County's case, all twenty-four jurisdictions, to make sure that we're all in agreement on the alternative formula. Then also Rocky's Express, their legal case with the state of Ohio, that they have, uh, court bidding, uh, on their property tax values. That is, as Matt would say, he won't be around to see when they settle that. So imagine when they went to the orders office for fifteen years, that gives you how slow the, uh, the cranks. But currently, they're paying about fifty percent of what they're supposed to be paying, and the rest is being left up to the courts to decide what their real valuation is. And if you go back through, on here, it will show you what we're not collecting. Go back a page here. You'll see down here, like, um, Rocky, Rocky's loss, it's shown to, uh, eleven million valuation that, you know, we've lost on their valuation. And then it'll show, I think, the amount of each fund that, um, we're losing from that. So somebody along the lines, when they do come to settlement, it probably will be a settlement, as typically has happened, and I think it's already happened once in northern part of Ohio, and, uh, the settlement was in favor of more than the fifty percent. So, I mean, there, it wasn't a full hundred percent, but, uh, they were paid, you know, the jurisdictions were paid. So with that being said, again, we won't know if it'll be retroactive to when they quit paying it, or whether there'll be an agreement that, you know, we'll pay the last three years and then pay from here going forward. So whoever's in these seats at that point in time, I guess, will have to deal with it then. Uh, back on the property taxes, probably one of the other things that they called our attention is that, just remember that when you hear these thirty percent increases, that's only gonna, you know, that's really just shuffling the money around. Let me stop.
Right.
Inside village will add new money. So the road department will, uh, see, you know, a significant increase in their revenue. The general fund will see an increase in its revenue, but the fire levy, which is all outside the ten mill, you know, it'll all just be reshaped by what portion that you pay. So those people's property taxes that go up the most will pay, uh, more than those that, you know, don't go up too much. So it's just gonna be shuffling around. Um, the school district, now they do have a twenty-mill floor, so that means theirs will go up on the twenty-mill, but anything over above that, it won't. So, you know, it's not apples to apples or dollars to dollars, or, you know, percent implies that your property taxes go up. So, very complicated, so just, just if you, somebody mentions it or whatever, just say that, you know, just because your property value went up thirty percent, that means your property taxes will go up thirty percent. The biggest thing that Matt's happy about is the fact that everybody around us and all the news stations are gonna deal with this first, and then when ours comes along, you know, we'll see, we'll be able to learn and see what happens with the other traffic channels. Okay, with the budget commission, they had some, uh, some other concern that we didn't really probably spell out properly in our budget of our needs and our use of funds, but I was able to clarify all that with them, and they were satisfied with my answers, so everything was well and, uh, was approved as, uh. Next item, uh, Warren County committed visitors, uh, um, one twenty-two South Main Street, which is our, uh, firehouse parking lot, and where the gazebo is at. They're gonna be using, probably in the bushes somewhere, Paul, I don't think I even talked to you about this.
Sure.
There's a geocaching program that they're gonna do, and it's, it's just gonna be a small box. They're gonna maintain it and so forth, and it's, it's the thing to get people to travel around and, you know, go to tourist places, and it's, it's a tourist attraction type of thing. So it's no expense to us, we just gave them permission to use our bushes.
Okay. Sounds good.
So, uh, they'll, they'll, I requested them, and they were gonna put it out, uh, I think it starts, uh, Friday after sauerkraut, and they were gonna put these out throughout the county the week before that, and I asked them not to put anything out in our area prior to, uh, the last sauerkraut festival, because we don't need a, something laying around somewhere where somebody's gonna say.
Oh.
Yeah.
B on B?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So, and they said, very good. Thank you very much for that, we will make sure that Waynesville is not getting any of this. Um, next item, Wright State University. I kind of partnered with Wright State University School of Nursing and the Host of the Pediatrics and Health Science class here in Waynesville community. They actually started today, uh, well, the first semester started last week. They're gonna be meeting here in our building on Tuesdays for about, I'm at today here and next Tuesday, and then I've got a list of their dates, but it's only about four or five times they'll be here. And they selected a rural community, they selected Waynesville to do, you know, house healthcare and stuff served in a rural setting and environment compared to a lot of these students are in. You know, they come from cities and towns where they got a hospital right there, and they've got doctors and so forth. And so today they came and they had their meeting in the morning, and then, uh, they went out, uh, all day, and they did a, what they call the windshield survey. Uh, I gave them a list of about fourteen different locations, and then they had already done some research and said to my, did the places that they were gonna go. And from what I understand from the professor, when they got back, they then, because they went out in pairs, and I think there's, there's twelve in the class today. And they did, they actually, most of it's gonna be observation, but they actually stopped talking to people today, and they got some good feedback, and so now they're gonna develop a project, something that they feel that the community may need, and then they're gonna work that project, and then on December fifth, they wanna present it to the, to the public, so. Uh, you know, I thought this, I got involved in this really for two different reasons. One is, and it really kind of panned out, I've got two nurses off, one's a flight nurse for already, and these are senior R N students at Wright State, and she's, uh, on another department or whatever, so I told her, I said, who'll be talking? And then she, she's got a military background, and there's another girl in the class that's got the military background and has, I don't know if she has her medic or not, but she has been involved in that. Uh, and the demographics of the class, I, I thought we had some males and females, but it was all, it was all pretty outside. Um, but there may be two or three in there that might actually have some sort of identity, so. But they come from a little bit all over. There wasn't anybody from, obviously, as I'm close, maybe in Xenia. They all told, I can't remember what the other locations were. Uh, thank you, and just, the other thing I also was, uh, interested about it is I know at Quaker Heights, they have, uh, shortage of nurses and they use. they have shortage of nurses and they're using agency staffing and so forth. And so a lot of these kids don't know exactly what field they want to get into. So it was also a way for them to see, you know, the small community where it's hard to get nurses and so forth to come in. And so it'll give them exposure to that. And so I just thought it was a very good program to see what they thought of the community as an outsider, as opposed to me being someone that's born and raised here, because sometimes you don't really know what, you only know what you know, and you don't know what somebody else thinks of. And I thought that was a big important thing, see what they come up with, what they feel like. Next item, and then there was just street lighting districts, put all those together. And actually, on my report, I noticed that the, at the very bottom, attached for the district cancellations, as our cancellations are the countulations, so evidently word changed what I typed in. So, and these are what each one of the subdivisions price will be on their assessments. There'll be a resolution tonight for this. I've already submitted this to the auditor's office, they've already processed it to be put on the tax duplicate. So that's been taken care of, it's just a matter of getting them to, we have to have a resolution supporting it to board approve these assessments. Next year, we, in our six-year contract with L.A. Lighting, I believe, is an increased year. So there will be a slide adjustment next year. And then the last item, which I can show you again the resolutions, is the pictures we have on the unit from the fire, cigarettes from last Friday that they took, last Thursday or Friday, whatever, thirty-first. With that, I think I'll rest.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gus.
We'll get tomorrow, we'll get to the resolutions, I'm sure. All right, old business. Miss your Patrick, how do you wanna do this?
I'm gonna cast to that, to the screen up there, because I can do that.
Okay.
If you don't mind a crick your neck a little bit. So I'm moving over all the content. Shut you down, Gus.
Shut you down.
So this, this kind of gives you an idea of the homepage here. I have just basic, right now, there, I have an importer that I just put a bunch of random content in there. I was building things until I could move all the official stuff over, so. Basically, there are notices, so any kind of public notices, those types of things. Now, everything's been done responsibly, so no matter if you're on an iPad, or if you're on a computer, if you're on a phone, you know, everything's going to scale appropriately for wherever you are. We have these quick links, so basically, for all of the main departments, you know, the most visited items essentially for those departments can appear right here. There are events. So basically, based upon, you have different event categories and those types of things, you'll see right now. There's galleries, so of course, there's a lot of photos that I'm exporting and then re-importing into the new site. For example, here's a new truck that was on the road department one. We have, so news basically is gonna be anything like this, where you can go through and, you know, news events. Whereas notices are gonna be more like your official notices, dealing with public information, new meetings, those types of things. There are also documents. Let's see. Just gonna bring those out, too. So essentially, all of the documents are gonna be easy to download, everything is basically where it needs to be. Shooting the backend though, too, this is built in WordPress, so it's extremely easy to go through and maintain. Because when you have a new document that needs to be updated or uploaded, there are both categories, so you can drop them right into the zoning area, and you'll appear on the zoning page. Same with notices, galleries, you're gonna find this is a lot easier for, to maintain going forward than the old one was.
So like, what, okay, like agendas and doc minutes and so forth, what do you have there? Is it meant as PDFs or?
Yeah, so any of those types of things can go in as PDFs. But, you know, I would say for a lot of things, like for example, our meeting agenda, the, the, events basically can capture the calendar that shows all of the events that are coming up, and, you know, those types of things. But, so, you know, having a PDF, on the current site, we have a PDF which has like the meeting calendar, for example. That won't be necessary to go through and upload those types of things, because there will be a dynamic calendar that's there. But if you want to upload the meeting minutes, I would recommend just attaching a PDF straight. And there would be a section that's on, it's not on here yet, there would be a section that has minutes, and it's just, you just drop them right in there. So what we'll do is, we'll have a training session. Number one, I'm going to be now all of the individual department pages. So as soon as those are done, I'm gonna send those to each of the department heads, to give you an idea right now.
Don't make it so easy, I can screw something up.
But, but really.
That's the reason I don't do one for the now, because I'm so afraid I won't mess something up, you know?
The really good thing about this is that, you know, the, oh, for some reason, I can't get to.
We can never get to Wayne Township pages.
It's probably because of Microsoft three sixty-five. You know, if you're using it for your mail account, they get goofy. But essentially, you know, there's some content that's on there right now. I'm essentially just porting everything over that is currently on the website into this new format. And then I'll send you your landing pages, you know, for zoning, or for roads, for fire, for zoning. If you have any changes or things you want dropped or added, let me know. But, you know, to give you an idea, you know, if somebody goes through and, I'll show you on this thing. I have half these links here from my local environment, and half of them are on the test environment here, so. So for example, we have elected officials which show up here, they, you know, are all separate. Then we can have zoning and everything else that's on here differently.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
Before you'd say we have forms and not email?
Yeah, so, so the.
Like our email addresses wouldn't be on there?
And that's where, there will still be, there will be a contact form, so when you click to, there will be a form essentially. But I would have put the email addresses on here for now, since they're on there right now. I didn't want to shake anybody's kind of the way they were doing things. But it would be my very stern recommendation that we pull off all public email addresses from the front side of the website, because it's, hey, all the content that's in here is just demo content. Most of the work in a website goes into actually setting up all of the tables, the databases, the modules, you know, all those little things that go into it. The content's definitely the easiest part, a lot of copy pasting. So I will, I'll keep you all updated this week. By the end of this week, I should have a link for all the different departments that I'll send to you, so you can audit that and let me know any changes. This image that's in the background, for example, you know, Gus right now has his, kind of a slider that has different images. This does the same thing. So, you know, this image can very easily be changed by anybody who's here. Yeah, so we'll get into it more. I'll set up some training sessions with everybody, so you can understand how to use it and what to do. But it should be a big update from what we currently have to deal with.
And how does it get physically moved over and replaced the Wayne Township?
So basically, I export the SQL databases, and then I import them into the current environment. So the server that I have is running on the test server, is the same hosting provider that we use in Wayne Township. So it will be very, it'll probably take us down for four or five hours, but I usually do those things in the overnight. So, again, for staff and the trustees, by the end of this week, look for an email to me, from me with the information on your landing page and any changes, suggestions you have, and we'll go from there.
Is there, Scott Pittsevans for Village of Corvo, when they, the company is doing their webpage, he says when he sends out, or when he posts, like the minutes, when we, it automatically emails them to then all the board members and anybody that's asked before, and they're mailing this.
Yeah, you should be, I mean.
I don't, that's something that's.
I'm sure, yeah, it shouldn't be that difficult to pull off.
Well, yeah, that saves another.
Which does.
Yeah, and I have a YouTube plugin, too, that I'm working on, so essentially, you'll have a, up in one of these corners. The reason I went with this three-column layout was just because we have so much information between notices, documents, events, photos, you know, and everything, that single column or two-column layout right now just doesn't, you have to scroll a lot. So this should allow everything to be present. And, and, yeah, the nice thing about WordPress is that it's so extensible, so there are so many different plugins for YouTube. So our YouTube channel will be right on there, and people can click and watch the videos right on there, so. Yeah, we're almost there. At least you can see that it is real now, and I haven't just been kicking a can down the road.
Cool.
My grandfather told me that in this world, you can have things that are good, fast, or cheap, and you can only choose two of the three. So I can promise you this will be good, and I can promise you it'll be cheap.
Thank you, this one will be cheap.
Looks good.
Thanks.
Thanks.
The other old business?
I would have one.
All right, questions or concerns with the bills?
I do like it.
All right, we'll get into our resolutions. Okay, the first one is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one, which we touched on a little bit, is the resignation of Deputy Tim Salas, Deputy Chief Tim Salas from the Wayne Township Fire Department. I think you already explained the reasons why a bit for us, so, you know, he's gonna be extremely missed on the department, because he did, I understand he did a lot. So, Tim, if you're watching, we're sorry to see you go. Any questions about this? All right, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Colvin, second by Mr. Jacobs to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one. Call roll there, Mr. Patrick.
Yeah.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this the fifth day of September twenty twenty-three.
All right, next one is twenty twenty-three dash sixty-two, on the opposite side. So this is acceptance and hiring of Olivia K. Dubard to the Wayne Township Fire Department as a firefighter slash EMTV.
I can motion to adopt Resolution.
Anything?
No, she's got her protocol already done, moved here from Lebanon. She's enrolled in the fire class, she already has her EMT, so she's enrolled in the fire class for that. Her uncle was the fire chief of Lebanon years ago, Jerry Chris, anybody knows that name?
I do.
Her father's a veteran, so.
Okay.
So that's really it.
All right, great.
Thank you. Make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-two.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Patrick, second by Mr. Jacobs to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-two. Call roll there, Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this the fifth day of September twenty twenty-three.
All right, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three, and this is what Gus talked about already, where he figured out the special assessment for the street lighting districts that we have. We need to do this resolution just to make it official. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Colvin, second by Mr. Jacobs to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-three. Call roll there, Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yeah.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this the fifth day of September twenty twenty-three.
All right, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-four. Resolution authorizing the dismissal of an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for grant funds for a multi-jurisdictional project of Corwin Avenue repaving. So this is repaving Corwin Avenue between State Route seventy-three west to forty-two, terminates at the Village of Waynesville. This is a, so this is just to get it started into the OPWC process?
Yes, and this is one of the documents that I have to upload to the work wise.
All right. There's a little bit of a typo here, where the second, whereas, district exclamation point zero, I assume, is that supposed to be ten?
Yes.
Okay. It looks like an exclamation point to me, so, all right. So, does anybody have any questions about this?
I have none.
What do we have as well? Okay, and we already have, yeah, Waynesville already signed a resolution. Okay. Twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty-eight is Waynesville's, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right, and who wants to make a motion?
I can wait.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-four.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Jacobs, second by Ms. Colvin to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-four. Call roll there on, Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
And Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this the fifth day of September twenty twenty-three.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five. Accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This is where Gus met with the Budget Commission for Warren County, as he talked previously in his, his report.
And these figures that they entered in as far as the amounts are what the Budget Commission approved.
Okay.
General fund inside millet of two hundred thirty-one thousand, road bridge inside millet's two, four hundred thirty-five thousand, and outside millet's for the fire fund, fire district fund five, seven, five hundred seventy-one thousand, and fire fund B, four hundred nineteen thousand. That's inside millet's for the general fund is point seven-one, inside millet's for road bridge is one point eight-four. Outside millet's for the fire fund is, artis fund is two point four-five, and for the fire fund B, it is one point eight-oh. Total's in inside millet's is six hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, and for outside millet's, nine hundred ninety thousand dollars. Total for inside millet's is two point five-five mils, and outside millet's is four point two-five. milage is 2.55 mils, and outside milage is 4.25 mils.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-65.
Second that?
Yeah. Motion by Ms. Colvin, second by Mr. Patrick to adopt Resolution 2023-65. Call roll there on Mr. Patrick?
Yay.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this the fifth day of September 2023.
Resolution save 23, that's what it says in my question, looks like it's 22 on there, but our, our agenda is at 22, just making sure.
Oh, yeah, it's just 23, okay, I didn't know what he's referring to, that's, who said that?
That was me.
Okay, I wasn't sure, how's, broiding and all those things.
I think so.
I think so. Did you say?
Roll tape.
I think I said second, yes.
Okay.
What, no, what was, was it right down? 65, right, don't move, Josh seconded.
Okay, sorry, Josh seconded.
You seconded that one?
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah, you're right, actually. I'm sorry. I thought we were over.
I seconded.
The two over.
I'll re-front that one.
Alright.
Okay, I wrote that in, just sorry.
And that was the important one.
That's the one you were in charge of.
Oh. Be front of the ready. Maybe, okay.
Okay, Resolution 2023-66, which is the acceptance and hiring of Sadie, is it Sadie?
Yeah, Sadie.
Sadie Schindler?
I'm missing an I on the name there, but.
Okay, so Wayne Township Fire Department has an EMTV. Has she passed everything?
Yep.
She's done?
She's passed everything.
Okay.
A little background on her, she's worked part-time for Harrison Township and worked full-time for City, or not City, Carrick Hospital, she's an Air Force reservist, she wasn't necessarily good, becoming a medic, being an air medic, paratone, workout, lead, Air Force stuff, and rock climber.
Okay, oh, another rock climber.
Yes, we have seen that recently, a lot of rock climbers.
We, we need to go hand out our, our volunteer forms at rock climbing events, I think.
On the cell.
Yes. Why not, right?
Yep.
Are, are these two that are coming on, are they as a result of any of our recent sponsorships that we've done, yeah?
That's what, pardon, that's what, how about the ones we previously approved?
One we had was one girl, that was it.
Who was the sponsor?
Melissa?
Or mother?
Mother Mall.
Mother Mall, okay, yes.
And this girl, the first one, I'm, I'm designing that, because that's a, that's being a part of that, because that is a, my grandmother and her was one of her great aunts or something, so it's way further away and it's like, you know.
Twelve cousins, six cousins.
Yes, exactly, and they're out of the hills of Kentucky.
Oh, yeah, well, that's.
Most of them came out of the hogs.
Most of our ancestors.
Yeah.
Some of them are, some of them are skidding the brothers out.
Came up to them good old NCR jobs.
Exactly.
Okay, so back to Sadie, Sadie, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-66.
I will second that.
Andy seconded, okay.
Good. Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Colvin, second by Mr. Jacobs to adopt Resolution 2023-66. Call there on is, Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yay.
This resolution is hereby adopted this the fifth day of September 2023.
Alright, Resolution 2023-67, authorizing the submission of a Furnace Forge Corwin Area Storm Sewer and Drainage Improvement Project application and multi-jurisdictional participation agreement by the Village of Corwin and Wayne Township Board Trustees to the OPWC. Village of Corwin has identified a need for certain public improvements, more commonly known as the Furnace Forge Corwin Area Storm Sewer and Drainage Improvement Project Phase One, situated within the jurisdiction of both Village of Waynesville and Wayne Township. Does that supposed to say Village of Corwin?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, he, he did some cut and pasting with the previous one, so, okay, we'll get that fixed. And approved by the Village of Corwin, Resolution 2023-01. So, we have identified certain public improvements to the said project, we'd like to support this level at 5% or 25,000, whichever is the lesser amount, and this gives points, as we know, to make it so that it's a little bit more likely to be approved, so. Okay, and this would be for 2024, is when the, is when it would be submitted, or when the project would be done?
It's going to be in competition with ours and the Village of Waynesville's, which, you know, with everyone's, they'll make it, they get carried over the following years.
Okay.
When they get funded, this is actually supplementing their federal grant at 1.1 million dollars, they're short about 600,000, so they're applying for 600,000, that'd be the amount to go over.
This is a possibility then, not a?
Right.
Okay. Alright, guys have questions about this?
I have none. I do not. Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-67. I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Patrick, second by Mr. Jacobs to adopt Resolution 2023-67. Call roll there on Mr. Patrick?
Yay.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this the fifth day of September 2023.
I was just shocked that the Village of Corwin has their first resolution just a few days ago.
I'm also, myself.
Okay.
I'm underwhelmed.
Need to get stuff up. Okay, now we have these two that were added. 2023-68 is approve the purchase of a dump truck for the road department off of state pricing. And it looks like this is Stike Main Chevy at Paulland, Ohio, has a 6500 heavy duty, single wheels, that means one WT, I'm not sure, but anyway, meets the specifications that would be looking at the construction of a new dump truck at the price of $141,955, which is shocking, but that's what they are.
You could pick up truck now that are somewhere 80, 90.
I know.
Close to 100.
I know.
Actually, yeah, as comparison, we bought a truck for, very similar to this, is a 650, a 2020.
Twenty-one and twenty, sixty-five.
It was 118,000, I believe.
So it's gone through two years of price.
Yeah.
Model increase, model price increases, plus this one, I was able, I was able to build the way I wanted it, so I was able to delete some things that we got on the other truck, because it was already built.
Yeah.
This one's a little heavier, okay, and it has, let's see, I, I cut, I cut a lot of things off, it doesn't actually shed, this is the, this is the final, what you're looking at as far as the list of details, I don't know whether you've got.
I did not give them the four pages.
Okay, and, and I apologize for that, I got this late Friday, I thought that I attached the attachment to the email that I sent to Gus, and I did not, so, it's kind of a.
Does this include label, labeling and everything, or not, can we, do we put our, we put our Wayne Township label, or do you do that separately after?
I do that, I have, I have decals for the doors at the shop, but I've upgraded the, the bed to 24 inch, 24 inches tall instead of 18, give me a little more capacity, this truck will actually go on the route that I drive, that I plow, which is the longest route that I have for the four, for the four routes, and then the other 6500, which I was using, will go to actually replace the 4900, the 1999 4900 International that Jeff's been using and on his route.
And which is the one that has to go back to the county?
That one.
That one?
Yes.
Okay.
We, more than likely, this one, the truck is, the truck is, we already have it, well, they already have it, it's, it's on the site, it's at Stikeman Chevrolet in Paulland, okay, which tentatively has a verbal hold on it pending approval of the board tonight, they're talking about, about a 12-week build, so that's going to put us, depending on how, how winter attacks us this year, we might have to start out the season with the other truck, and then I'm looking at this one, probably getting to us the end of November, beginning to mid of December.
Can we put something in the contract, actually?
I'm sorry?
Something in the contract as an incentive to make it so that they get it done on time? Since we, yeah.
Now, you'll find that down here important, price quoted is valid for 15 days from date issued, tax and delivery are not included unless displayed, due to market conditions and instability of parts and supplies, pricing may fluctuate from the cost of closed product, it may change without notice, good thing about that is the chassis will probably absolutely stay the same.
Right, and it's there.
The dead parts are still subject to availability, but I think a lot of this language is still from a year or two ago, but they probably still aren't going to want to guarantee anything, they're going to give you their best guess, their best estimate.
So I can tell you, the plow is set, because that's coming from Boston, they are, those are already built and everything, you know, the biggest portion of the truck that will be impacted by that statement is the bed, because the bed will have to be manufactured and built, they, the, they have the spreader, they have the spinner, in stock.
Is it then because you had the increase in size, like would they have it if it was the other size?
No.
No?
Beds are built, as sold, or as requested or what have you, so yeah, no, they don't have, they don't have beds, and it'll be a stainless steel bed, which is the same that I have on the other, on the 550 and the other 6500.
Did they say they're running on time?
Yes.
Okay, no delays, they don't expect any delays.
They don't, they don't expect, they, they don't expect any delays, like, that's why I was saying, the spreader and the spinner is already in stock, the plow is, is already, I mean, it's just a matter of getting it, so they, they might have it in stock on their, on their place, on, up in Fort Wayne, the truck is already there, so that cost remains fixed, so the big, the big variable, and the other difference is that the liquid, we add, I added the liquid on the 6500 we currently own, alright, I eliminated that backpack toolbox off of this, they originally had in this bid, or quote, I eliminated that and put the liquid system on that, so it'll stay on there year-round. So, and which is part of, you know, you hear, yeah, I mean, two years' worth of model year price increases, plus the addition of the pre-wet system incorporated into this vehicle, yeah, it's a little bit of a sticker shock, I, I fully admit, but I feel that it's within, it's in line with current market conditions, and also it is within our budget allowances.
Yeah.
In addition to the.
Do we have budget costs?
We had structured $125,000 for equipment for the road, road department, and then the other 25,000 on the next resolution is going to come around.
Okay, that's what I said.
So it'll be right in line with what we have provided, except for 25, we're taking that article.
Does that leave us for article?
I'd have to give, I mean, I'd have to go back and look at it.
I.
Okay, you can go back to the last reports I gave you, and it's in there as far, as far as what we're stating now.
Then we're on the hook for potentially Village of Waynesville and Corwin.
Right, 25, right, I'm going to see.
Oh, we'll have, we'll have enough above that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just, just saying what's left after.
Right.
You know, it's, it's. We're still, we gotta spend this by the end, year end 2024, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if any of those projects do not come in, or they, we should know about them by when?
December.
By this December?
Okay.
Then we would have to pay the money, or will we pay that money out? That's the question.
Those projects would start when the fiscal money becomes available July 1st of 24.
Okay.
So those projects would go into construction probably in the fall of 24.
So they'd be pushing the end of the year?
End of 25, which we, as long as we have it encumbered and so forth, we can actually pay it out in 25.
Correct, yes.
So, so if they don't, we can always spend article on those OPWC projects that are funded this, this upcoming cycle, if it gets pushed back another cycle, then.
We can't, figure something else, take that 25 years, put something else, but, but we wouldn't be on the hook for the 25 year, because it would get pushed off, correct?
But we.
Or it would be.
And we would still be moving?
Yeah.
We'd still be on the hook for it, but we have to find the money elsewhere, then, yeah.
Well, you just take that money that you have here, put it into whatever you need to be able to cover costs, it would cover your costs one way or another.
Yeah.
Always be prudent in the correct fashion, yes.
Well, I know you, you researched heavily trying to find a used one.
Yeah, I, I even before, I mean, even today, I looked and went through all, I've got, I mean, I've got a whole multitude list of websites, and there's just nothing out there. I mean, I can find a lot of stuff with 200,000 miles on it, for just, for, for just shy of $100,000.
We'd be selling the old one, right? We'd be putting the old one on GoDeals.
The good is accounting.
That's the one that does, that's the one that does.
Okay.
Alright.
What's the average life, lifespan of the truck?
Oh, we're replacing the 1999, so.
That's 23, 24 years.
And it had the first 12, 15 years life to be accounted.
To be accounted, which was a hard life.
She was road hard.
So 20, 25, 25 years.
Alright, take good care of her.
I take care of all my equipment, it's too expensive not to.
Can't get parts for it, I got the problem with you takers right now, they're 97, you can't get parts for it. Toolbox is good.
I was, I was not, I was not looking to, to purchase a new truck when I, when I started on this, but you can't buy something that's not there, so. We, I just shifted gears a little bit, and we have the, we have the funds, and at the very least, it'll be shy of half its life by the time I retire and I'm leaving my, the next road department superintendent with very good equipment.
You guys ready to vote?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, Resolution 2023-68, I'll make a motion to vote on it?
I will second that.
Okay, Ms. Colvin, motion by Ms. Colvin, second by Mr. Jacobs to adopt Resolution 2023-68.
Okay, Ms. Colvin, motion by Ms. Colvin, second by Mr. Jacobs to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-eight. Mr. Patrick? Yay. Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
This resolution is hereby adopted this the fifth of September twenty twenty-three and four-two.
All right, um, going hand-in-hand, resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine is using twenty-five thousand dollars of ARCA funds to pay for said truck, that is in sixty-eight. This is a no-brainer to me, so I'm going to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine.
Oh, well, we hope.
Second.
Josh. Yeah, I don't really, I don't know, I, I, I know your initial, that's not remember.
I may not remember here in the next few minutes, so.
That's funny.
Got a motion by Ms. Colvin, second by Mr. Patrick to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine, call the roll on, Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
And Mr. Patrick?
Yeah.
This resolution is hereby adopted this the fifth day of September twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
All right, uh, any correspondence?
How about other old, new business?
Oh, other new business?
Yes, I guess we're having an open house on the twenty-fourth.
Yes, you are.
And from two to four. And I guess we are concentrating on the levy only, so we don't get sidetracked.
All right. And you have any second one on October?
Nope, uh, October twenty-ninth, two to four.
Okay.
Do you guys send out invites, are you going to put in, um?
It's going to be on our new website. For one thing, we know that.
When's it going to begin, Paul?
The twenty-fourth of September, two to four.
The magazine won't be out, about to get it in.
And then, uh, October twenty-ninth.
Or the latter one, it could maybe be.
Sundays, both of them are Sundays.
Okay. Well, we have to put on our Facebook page, too.
Yeah, it's going to say Facebook, and all that stuff, we all, we can have this.
Try getting Good News Friday.
Good News Fridays is my next question, yeah. Okay, so actually, now that I come to think of it, we probably, I guess Chief can put it on his, on, on the fire, WTFD.
We can put it as an open house.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, well, as long as they're not focused on how people are going on the levy, yes. Yeah, open house for informational purposes.
Correct.
About the levy.
Exactly.
And?
Are we, uh?
Today.
May food, is it just like, it's, is there anything set for?
Bounce houses.
No, all right.
We haven't said anything like that, you know, we were, when, when Diane left there not a ghost, it was just like, nobody really ever took what we've been doing.
Yeah, they did, I think, just under, or I thought they did.
Well, they were under the pressure they wanted to do for recruiting, for levy, and it was just, it was just too much scattered around and not.
There was a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
So, so do you want to do something for recruiting, I guess, is another thing, so I don't correct this.
Not, not, not until after November, I mean, we got a crowd festival, we got no fun, we got new engine coming in, we got getting service, I mean, we just got two months going on, we cannot do nothing between now and eleven. There is just no other way we can do anything else, I mean, you, you can't have these people that work all week, type every weekend, doing this.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's understandable.
It's just too much, you're, you know, you start asking too much, and then the next thing you know, you've got two or three people trying to do it, and that's just not.
Okay, um, all right, we got those right now, we'll get those advertised.
And Albers is working on a banner.
Yeah.
Other pricing that WTFD Inc. is taking care of, so.
I'm, I'm going to work on a, um, well, we'll see, an informational fact sheet is what they want, something different than, just something more concise than what the article is in the magazine.
Because we've got.
Or use article.
Well, yeah, but I'll just, I need to downsize it, shrink it, so it's postcardable, something they can whip out of their pocket, yeah.
Yeah, if you get something like that, if you can send it to me, and I'll get with you, and we'll look at that website, I'm not a electronic person, but that uploading to the thing that had it maybe sent out in the middle of October or something like that, that postcard?
Yeah.
Or something.
Okay, um, on to any other new business?
We can even hand pass them out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We want some of the.
Well, you got, yeah, you can hand pass them out at your open houses, plus you've got beggars night.
Yeah, beggars night, we got, uh, we got a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity there.
Correct. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I have no problem helping and passing out the information, you know, that's basically it is.
Yep. Okay, any other, uh, new business?
Time's up.
All right, correspondence, start with Gus, here on to the printer.
Um, did everybody get female today for the workforce development meeting with the three candidates or?
Yeah.
And I don't have any additional, um, correspondence.
Okay, it looks like, uh, he does have some staying there, and then he wants those.
September twenty-ninth, eight to noon.
Your handle, they will, they will say that they are.
I got it, put, I put it over here, and I'll try to get it, I guess. Yeah.
I could try to get it.
Does it look right?
September twenty-ninth, Friday. I don't look bad then.
All right, we have the Warren County Health District Quarterly Report for March through May twenty twenty-three. See there, it comes out, from the Warren County Health District, and then we have, um, the monthly newsletter from the Warren County Health District. We have from E, E Pick, E Pick Corporate Restructuring LLC, legal documents, third amendment, chapter eleven, plan of liquidation of volunteer.
Oh, the.
Uh, energy service, yeah, okay. So, that was for the gas, right? Okay.
Good.
Um, Starbucks Appreciation Dinner.
Right.
Uh, not Starbucks, the coffee, this is, uh, Sunrise Cooperative, it looks like, Starbucks, where the Wilkington, Ohio. So, who uses Sunrise Cooperative, is that?
Uh, we get, our.
Is that our chemicals and stuff, or something from?
Yes.
Okay.
Scott Lee from, from Sunrise.
From Sunrise.
You have a customer appreciation dinner on September fourteenth, Wilkington from Starbucks, from Sunrise Corporation.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make a copy of that.
Okay.
You can bring free Starbucks.
No.
Oh, boy.
We get brand-new bricks.
On Starbucks Road.
Yeah, Starbucks Road, yeah, yeah.
I'd be only free, I'm going to get some chip.
Yeah. Oh, so we, he must have, um, checked with Energy Harbor on AES, and we did get, um, transferred over to Energy Harbor. It looks like, remember last, last meeting, he had to call with a question about that?
Some, some, some residents.
Confirmed that a request has been received to change your electric supplier under, um, higher select your choice. So either Daryl called, or this happened automatically, but we are now under Energy Harbor, which is good.
Change the, you need a letter, have to change it in three days to call back.
That sounds awesome. Thanks, Daryl. Okay, um, any elected officials comments?
None.
I don't have any.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any work sessions, I don't think so. Um, executive session. We would like to go into executive session for personnel matters, ORC one twenty-one, point twenty-two, G one. So they, appointment, employment, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, so.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Actually, is that, is that a roll call, though? To the executive?
I think you, you have to, I don't think we closed the meeting out yet, but I think one of the things we talked about is there any action afterwards.
Yeah, but is it a roll call, or is it, is it a?
We'll make a, we'll do.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the Patrick?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin, yes. Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Executive session, we went to them.
Okay.
So you want to go over the.
Direct to the room.
Yeah, okay. You need.
Just, just us.
Okay, so. Do you want to turn that?